Very well, thanks.
Excellent, excellent.
Inspired by this morning's message.
That's wonderful. Well, that is good thing as you have a few minutes with me that you're going to have to endure.
Yes, well. There were some verses, there were some verses that were used this morning, verses, you know?
And I'm sure those verses were found in books and chapters.
Okay, sir.
Let's get this slide up and then we can get into things. So a quick recap for those who perhaps weren't here on Tuesday. We have been looking at, so in total, we've been looking at the case or a case study on lost. And we've been focusing on Luke chapter 15, the parable of the last things being the last coin, last sheep and last son. We have been doing a tri-fold analysis of this scripture. Where we're looking at a diagnosis where we identify what some of the issues or problems that are affecting some of the characters in these passages. Looking at correlation, how those issues might appear in our own lives or might be similar to our own struggles. And then prescription, how can we deal with these issues or problems? Especially from a spiritual standpoint and a practical standpoint. So we have been looking at the lost sheep for the past few weeks. And we looked firstly at scatter grain syndrome. And we looked at the diagnosis in sheep, the correlation in us as humans and Christians. And then we looked at some prescriptive methods that we could use to counteract these issues. Then we moved on to bark bug. And that is where we are at the moment. We diagnosed it, identified it as struggles that we have in regards to looking beyond our own perception and judgment and our own capabilities. And that translates into doubt and worry. So we, we did the correlation and then we have started looking at the prescription. So last week we concluded, last week we started pill of, sorry, pill of past providence. And that is where we are at the moment. So we finished pill of present tense last week, Sunday. Did a small recap, then we started pill of past providence. And we looked initially at Psalm chapter 40. And we started, we concluded that last Tuesday and we have started Psalm 138. But just for those who weren't here, perhaps I'm just going to read through the Psalm that we'll be looking at starting today. And hopefully we will finish the rest of the Psalms today. Or if not, we'll at least learn a lot from these Psalms. So it reads, "I will praise you with my whole heart. Before the gods, I will sing praises to you. I will worship toward your holy temple and praise your name for your loving kindness and your truth. For you have magnified your word above all your name. In the day when I cried out, you answered me and made me bold with strength in my soul." So on Tuesday, we had looked at the first two verses. Just to give a quick recap, so David is saying, "I will praise you with my whole heart. Before the gods, I will sing praises to you." And what we recognize is that this praise that David is speaking about is an extension, not just physically speaking, but emotionally and mentally speaking, involving the whole heart, the will, the intellect. And that praise is not just limited to how he feels, but it's translated into action as well. So he demonstrates how he feels by actually singing songs of praises or celebrating God in song. We looked at verse two, and this is where we ended last Tuesday. Says, "I will worship toward your holy temple and praise your name for your loving kindness and your truth. For you have magnified your word above all your name." So David continues to reinforce his, his, um, his position of worship. He speaks, he then goes on to say why, why he is convicted to praise, to worship God in this manner or to this extent. And he aligns it to God's loving kindness and to his truth. Truth here, not just being truth in the sense of honesty, but truth in the sense of trustworthiness, truth in the sense of being the same in spite of the circumstances. And he went on to say that God magnifies his word above his name. And this point reinforces the fact that God was more, or is more concerned about the promises he makes to man than man highlighting God's amazing nature. So us praising God is less important to God than is the promises he makes to us. And that should provide us with greater desire, greater fervor to praise God, which is what David is saying here. Because of that, David is can't but consistently praise God. So that is essentially what we covered on Tuesday. Now we're going to be moving on to verse three, new passages. Just a reminder to those, if you can just put yourself in your team's, in your name, that will make it easier for me to identify you. The verse three says, "In the day when I cried out, you answered me and made me bold with strength in my soul." "In the day when I cried out, you answered me and made me bold with strength in my soul." Before we look at this verse, let us remember that this verse is an extension of the four that David uses in verse two. So when David says four, here he is establishing the reason behind his praise, the reason behind his worship, the reason behind the extension of himself. And one of those reasons is that in the day when he cried out, he here being David, God answered him and made him bold with strength in his soul. So let's look at some other words that David chooses to use. A cry out here. So cry out means to call out, i.e. to properly address by name. So the calling out here properly means to address by name. So the implication behind this cry out is not just, so we, we looked at, um, if you were there and I think we discussed it on Sunday, when we're looking at the word halloo. And the halloo means to cry out for attention, cry out for attention. That cry out is a cry out of desperation, but it is not necessarily to a specific person. So David quantified it when he said cried out to God, in halloo to God. So we knew that when he was desperately crying out, he was doing so to God. But this cried here, as is used, speaks to call to essentially address by name. So when David is crying out here, David is not just saying help, he's not just crying out, somebody save me. He's addressing God by name. God, help me. God, save me. God, come to my rescue. And I think there is significance here twofold. One, it speaks to David's recognition of who has the capability to save. A lot of the times when we are in struggles, when we are in problems or primary addressing, the person to whom we, we go to solicit assistance from is not always God at the beginning. More often than not, the person that we call out to at the first instance is the person that we believe to have the greatest capability of aiding us in whatever we are struggling through. And if that isn't God, then that speaks to where our belief as to who has the capability to save us lives. And that's something that as Christians, we have to be very careful about. When we cry out, are we showing God what we view his capability to save us as? If we only cry out to God when we have exhausted all other avenues, are we telling God that God is a last resort? That God is a hail Mary when all things, other things have failed? And if that is what we are saying, then what are we saying of God's power? What are we saying of God's capabilities? Is it that we only trust in it because we have no other option? Do we, can we say that we believe that God is capable of saving us? If he's the last person that we ask to save us when we need salvation? So in David's crying out to God by name, this is David recognizing that, hey, this is the guy, this is the person, this is the source from which my salvation will come. And that's encouragement to us. If we believe that God is capable of saving, if we believe that God wants to save, then shouldn't he be the first person that we call when we need help? Shouldn't he be the first person that we call when we are, that when we are struggling? Things for us to consider. Second point of interest in addressing by name. It speaks to knowing and it speaks to relationship. You have to know somebody's name to call to them by name. If you don't know somebody's name, you cannot call to them by name. Figuratively speaking, calling to someone by name speaks to the relationship that you have with them. I'm sure for us as, when we were children or younger, there was a greater significance to when our parents called us by our full name versus when they called us by whatever they usually referred to us as, whether it be first name or some nickname. You know, when your parents call you by your full name, that is problem. But your parents had that capability because of the relationship that they have with you. Similarly, being able to call out to someone by name speaks to the relationship that one has with that individual. And that is another thing that is being reinforced by David, calling out to God by name. He is drawing on the relationship that he has with God. And we as God's children have the same, the same convenience of being able to call God by name because we are his children. We aren't strangers. God isn't somebody passing by and looking at us in trouble and we say, hey, it's you there. Can you help me out? No, he knows who we are. We know who he is. We can call him by his name. Brother Smith in the chat says, "This means that at a minimum, we should ask God to empower the person we are calling out to for assistance." Excellent point, Brother Smith. I'm not saying in any way, shape or form that we shouldn't look to people to help us. God places people in our lives so as to, to aid us, to assist us. But God should still be the first person to whom we speak. If it is to ask him to provide someone to aid us. If it is to ask him, as Brother Smith said, to empower the person to whom we are going to aid us. But if we know that all the power is in this person, why would we not go to that person initially? It's like if you go to, you go to a store and you're getting, you're getting problems with the cashier or you're having problems with the attendant. You call for the manager because you know that the manager has the authority. You recognize that the person who you're speaking to right now is limited. They can only do so much. There are some decisions that they can't make. There's some decisions that they don't have the power to make. So you call the manager because you know that boy, the manager is supposed to be able to be the decision, have the decision-making power. Similarly, if we know that God has all the power, then shouldn't he be the one that we are going to, to address the problems? Rather than focusing on resources or individuals that are limited in their capabilities. Something for us to think about. So David says, he called, he cried out to God by name. And then it says, he was answered. So David, primarily, his reasoning is not so much his crying out, but more so the fact that God answered. And answered here means anna, if pronounced correctly, and it means to I or to he to, i.e. to pay attention. So the answer here means to I or to. Last you. Stephen. Sorry about that, um, internet walls. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure when I cut off. What's the last thing you heard, Mr. Brother Smith?
To I.
Pardon? Oh, to I or, or he to. Okay, alright. So not, not too long ago, thankfully. So yes, so God pays attention and he responded to David's cry. And it isn't something that we should take for granted. I think a lot of the times we do because we look, we look at God as being a regular individual and not being the omnipotent, omnipresent God that he is. The fact that I can cry out to the creator of the universe, to the Alpha and Omega, to the perfect powerful being in my sin, in my shame, in my flaws, and he will pay attention to me is a ridiculous reassurance. Imagine you are at some gathering with, I don't know if it carries the same weight now to say the president of the United States, but since we are Jamaicans, let's use our prime minister to start. So we are at, we're at a gathering with the most honorable Andrew Holness. And there is a massive group of individuals amongst us. And I, I am in the crowd and I say, "Most honorable Andrew Holness," please note, this is not having been recognized to ask any questions, et cetera. "Most honorable Andrew Holness, I am having financial struggles. Can you assist me?" If he were to pay attention to me, so to heed me, to listen to what I have to say, then I would feel especially special. But he would have no obligation to. More than likely, I would be told to be silent, that it is not my time to speak, that I am being, I'm speaking out of turn. And even if he were to look towards me and to answer, more than likely, what I am asking of him would not be, be given. And this is the prime minister of Jamaica. I'm sure the greater, the Queen of England, the greater the significance or the fame of the individual in question is the less likely we believe that we will be paid attention to by those individuals. Because a lot of the times, the way we look at it, the status of that individual, the stature of that individual, um, the achievements of the individual, the greater disparity between ourselves and that individual is the less likely that they will have need to pay attention to us. Imagine then the gap between us and God in regards to who he is, in regards to what he can do, and in regards to our deservingness of him. If we look at that gap and see that he still is willing to answer us when we cry out, it will give us a far greater understanding of how privileged we are and how privileged that position it is for us to be able to call ourselves his children. And in David recognizing this, he can't but praise God. And if we truly recognize this, if we truly appreciate this, then how much more so should it be translated in our own praise? So God answers David. David cries out, God answers him, but God doesn't leave it there. God doesn't just respond. David says that God makes him bold with strength in his soul. So God answers and God makes him bold. So the word make bold or made bold, here it's a verb rehab and it means to urge severely, to urge severely. And figuratively speaking, it means to embolden. And embolden here means to make bold. So God made David bold in when David needed assistance from God. And how did God make him bold? By giving him strength in his soul. Strength here means strength. So I'm sure we all know what strength is, might, power, essentially, capability. And soul here means a breathing creature. And by implication, it means the entire being of a creature. So when David cried out to God and God answered, God made David bold by giving him strength in his entire being. Not just strength in regards to physical strength, but mental, emotional, spiritual strength. And that is something that God is willing and able to give us when we are struggling as well. When we feel weak, when we feel timid, when we feel pressed down on all sides, God is capable to, to give us boldness through strength in our entire being. But we need to cry out. We need to cry out and just as importantly, when we are made bold through strength in our soul, we need to praise God. We need to praise God. We need to worship him. We need to bow down. We need to extend our hands. We need to sing songs of praise. Not just in gratitude, but to reinforce the memory of God delivering us. Because as I said, that is the point of the pill of past providence. We are forging in our mind the consistent memory of God coming to our rescue. So that whenever we feel that we need saving, that we will return to God. Knowing what he has done, knowing that he's capable of doing it again and knowing that he deserves the praise that we have to give. So another powerful Psalm by David. There, there is no limit to the powerful Psalms of David, but this one in particular is a reminder for us to be thankful, as Sister Smith had said last, last class, be thankful. It's an important part of, of our relationship with God. And I know everybody in this chat is, doesn't like ingratitude. Nobody likes doing things for others and that person being ungrateful. That shouldn't be a mentality that we extend to God, especially seeing as the things that God gives to us, for the most part, can only be given by him. Any questions, any queries, any comments? Before we move into another passage. Alright, if it is clear, just say, keep going Stephen. Anybody?
Keep going Stephen.
Thank you, thank you. Alright. So let's look at another passage, Psalm 116. I'm going to need two readers, see if you can just raise your hand for me, please. Alright, so Sister Smith and this could be Sister Sanja or Brother David, the same theme too. So Sister Smith, you are in, you will be reading yellow and Sister Sanja or Brother David, you will be reading green. Go ahead, Sister Smith.
"I love the Lord because he has heard my voice and my supplications. Because he has inclined his ear to me, therefore I will call upon him as long as I live. The pains of death surrounded me and the pangs of shawl laid hold of me. I found trouble and sorrow. Then I called upon the name of the Lord. O Lord, I implore you, deliver my soul." Verse four.
"Gracious is the Lord and righteous. Yes, our God is merciful. The Lord preserves the simple. I was brought low and he saved me. Return to your rest, oh my soul, for the Lord has dealt bountifully with you. For you have delivered my soul from death, my eyes from tears and my feet from falling."
Alright, thank you. Well read, Sister Smith, Brother Tennant. And the points shall not be forgotten. Alright, so another, another very powerful, very encouraging Psalm by the psalmist himself. Frightened that David never asked if he can get extra points since is his name fake in speaking for? Um, so Psalm 116, let's jump into verse one. It says, "I love the Lord."
Because he has, oh, sorry.
That's a, you look wise.
Yes, actually.
"I love the Lord because he has heard my voice and my supplication." Once again, we see David providing reason behind his actions. And I think this is for our benefit, more so than his. He knows why he loves the Lord, but he is providing us with encouragement. And helping us to see that boy, if this, if your circumstances are similar to mine, then I think your conclusion should be similar to mine. Love here means to have affection for. Love here means to have affection for, to have affection for. And it can speak as human love for God or human love to God. So it can speak to the love that we have or the love that we show to God. So in both cases, David could be saying that I feel this love for the Lord. I feel this affection for the Lord, or he could be saying, I show this affection to God. So it could be a feeling or a demonstration. Go ahead, Sister Smith, I see your hand.
I'm sorry.
Oh, accident?
Yes, an accident, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, no problem. Alright, so David is saying, as I said, it could be dualy. Feeling affection for God because, or showing affection to God because. And I think that it applies in, at least for us, it, it, both circumstances are applicable. And he says because, so for those who are familiar with English, we know that the part of speech because here is a conjunction. And conjunctions in parts of speech, they link words or group of words and show how they are connected. So that's what conjunctions do. They link words or groups of words and they show the connection between the two. So because here is, is linking David's love for the Lord with God hearing his voice and his supplication. And the connection that is showed is in the definition of the word because. And it means for the reason that, since, or the fact that. So if we were to replace because with any of these explanations, it would be, I love the Lord for the reason that he has heard my voice and my supplication. I love the Lord since he has heard my voice and my supplication. I love the Lord for the fact that he has heard my voice and my supplication. There's a connection between David's affections and David's actions with God's actions in hearing his voice and his supplication. So let us look at what it is exactly that God has done in this hearing. So hear here or heard here mean to hear intelligently. And we have seen this used by David before. And this is often with implication of attention or interest. So God here is hearing because he is attentive and God is hearing because he has intent to attend to. God is hearing because he's paying attention to David and God is hearing because he wants to attend to David. He has interest in assisting David. And what did he hear? He heard David's voice and David's supplication. Voice here means a voice, as in what someone uses to speak, as well as a sound, which is the utterance that someone makes. And David separates his voice from his prayer, which is the supplication here, an earnest prayer, to reinforce the way God listens. So he separates, David could have said, has heard my voice, or he could have said, have heard my prayer, and they could have meant the same thing if, if he only wanted to bring out the idea of God listening to his prayer. But he separates these two to reinforce the way God listens. God listens to us and God listens to our prayers. So the voice, the sound that David makes, God is attentive to that just because it is the sound David is making. And God listens to the request that David has. And it's it's different, it separates the idea of someone who is there only to solve or only to provide solution for. It shows a deeper sense of caring, a deeper sense of cons, of concern, a deeper sense of love. Knowing that God doesn't just listen to the things that we need from him, but he listens to us in general. And it's, there's a, um, a stereotype in relationships, I think I had made this point before, that men only listen to solve. And a lot of the time, women are calling for them to just listen, to be there, to support through, through hearing. Don't know if anybody in here can say if that is false or not, I don't have enough experience in the matter to say that that is so. Um, husbands, be careful if you want to give a response. But we as children of God have the comfort in knowing that God listening to us is dual. Is God listening to support us through hearing our voice? God giving us an avenue to vent or to share what it is that we're going through just for the sake of sharing, as well as God listening to solve, God listening to provide, God listening to answer. And David uses the two terms to, to give us that encouragement and to re, and to let us know, this is why, this is why I love God. Because God isn't just there to solve my problems, he's there to listen to me. He's there to hear my voice. He's there to, to reassure me that I'm not going through anything alone, because when I speak to him, he's hearing. Any questions or we can move on to the next verse?
Yes, actually, I wanted to tell you down a rabbit hole.
Alright, no problem, Brother Smith, let's go.
No, if the question of, um, we look to David, man of a garden, goes on heart and we celebrate things. But he says, I love the Lord because, I mean, because, um, he has heard my cry, whatever, those things. There, there's an argument that says, you know, um, that we should learn to just love God because of who he is and not for what he does for us and so on, but, you know. Um, so here's David, he's saying, I love the Lord, and he has no problem in saying that, you know, at least one of the reasons why I love the Lord is because, um, of what he's been for me, hears my voice and so on. So yeah, so that was, that was what was running through my mind as to, um. Is it okay, I suppose, to feel an affection, a love for God because of the blessings and because of what he does for us? Um, how do we actually separate that and just love him because of who he is?
Excellent, excellent question.
I don't really know how to question it properly, but yeah, that's it.
No, man, I, I, I get you wholeheartedly and it has always been, it has always been a a query of mine, like how sincere can I claim my love for God if, if it is hinged on the benefits that God provides? And, um, I always, I always wondered, is it, can I really truly say that I love God if the reason I love God is because of what he does for me and what he promises me? But when I look in scripture, almost every interaction with mankind and God seems to be based on God providing benefits. So God himself, when asking for obedience, when asking for faith, when asking for, for commitment, for the most part establishes reason so as to do so. So in, in all, all of the covenants that he established in the Old Testament, you see where God says, do this, be my people, obey my commandments. And then what? Your descendants will be XXX, I will never leave you, not for sake of your enemies. Going to cower at your feet, you're going to be a blessed nation, et cetera, et cetera. You jump into
Because I took you to Egypt and all that was gonna, yeah.
Well, not just the things that I promise you, but also the things that I have already done for you. It is not just hinging your love and your obedience and what I will do. It is also hinging it on what I already have done. And as you said, some people will say, no, your love for God should be based on, on, on how amazing God is in spite of whether he's going to do anything for you or not. But, um, I, I concede to the fact that God knows man better than we do. And perhaps God has recognized that, that kind of um, of love where it has nothing to do with what can be done. Perhaps that is a love that mankind is incapable of. Perhaps we need, we need dependency. We need to, to really feel the love that God calls for him. We need, a part of us needs to be able to depend on him. And I think dependency stems from, from support or providence. We learn to depend when we are being provided for, like children. Um, are dependent on their parents because their parents provide for them and continue to provide for them. And this dependency is fostered and I presume the love grows. A lot of children that are at odds with their parents is because of the lack of provision that was given and not the financial provision, but emotional provision, um, and mental provision, et cetera. So perhaps God as our father recognizes that for our love to properly be fostered, for our love to properly bloom, it has to bloom from a state of dependency. And for us to really garner that dependency, we have to be provided for. So in, in requesting this love, in requesting this obedience, in requesting this faith from us, God provides, God fosters that dependency and then in us accepting this, we now can find the love that God calls from for us. Um, that's, that is my best handle on it. But as you said, Brother Smith, there are so many scriptures where God, God before, sometimes before he even asks you to do the thing, he outlines all the things that he will do or has done and hence this is where you should be. Um, uh, go ahead, Brother Smith.
Got some input in the chat?
Okay, um, yes, Sister Sandra or Brother David says Hebrews chapter eleven. A reward of those who diligently seek him. Um, excellent passage. I remember when the disciples said to Jesus that after we have denied all these things and followed you, what is, what is, what is there to gain? Jesus never said to them, hey, your mind is in the wrong place. Focus on following me first and then we can talk about the benefits. No, Jesus said that there's eternal life, eternal life in numerous other passages, he speaks about the physical blessings that are there for those who, who, um, who follow God, we look at the Beatitudes and all of the, the blessed that is established by Jesus is followed by a fore. There is a reason, there is a because of, there is a con, a connection between the behavior and something that you will get as a result of it. Passages like give and it will be given to you, press down, shaken together and running over will be putting your bosom. That is literally a side by side, you do this, you get this kind of scenario. And it, as Sister Smith said, all blessings are conditional. All blessings are conditional and I guess what we have to be careful of is ensuring that what God does fosters true love and that it is not love that is conditionally based on the things that we receive. So whilst what God has done for us inspires our love for him, that love should not be solely focused on the things. So yes, God has done this for me and I love him, but I don't just love these things, I love him in totality. So these things help me to foster my love for God. But that's not the only reason that I love him. And over time, I realize that when I don't get these things, my love doesn't waver. I think that is, that is the truth behind whether our love is properly fostered by what God has done or is entirely encapsulated in that. If when we don't get the things that we want, or we don't see things turning out the way that we want them to. If that happens and all of a sudden my love for God vanishes, then that mean, that means that the love wasn't properly fostered by what God has done for us. But if it's a case where I ask for something and I don't get it, me knowing that God having done this will do it again and is capable of doing it again, then I won't waver in my belief in God to do it, because my love has properly been fostered by what he has already done. Don't know if that lends any clarity to the matter. Um, seeing Brother Smith in agreement, Sister Smith in agreement.
Really, 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 well put.
Alright, thank you, Brother Smith, and thank you for, for that rabbit hole. Um, it wasn't as deep as, as I was thinking it would be, so that's good to hear. And I think it was a necessary tangent. I think some people probably had similar thoughts in mind. Alright, so jumping down to verse number two. And we see David says, because he has inclined his ear to me, therefore I will call upon him as long as I live. Before we attack David and say that he is using bad grammar, a lot of us were misinformed in our high school days as to the placement of conjunction. A lot of people said that they can't start a sentence with a conjunction, but that in itself is not true. You can start sentences with conjunctions, it just depends on what time. But I won't bore you with the English. Let us get into the Hebrew, if it's clearly more interesting. But before we reach that, the same because we've used, and as we said before, it means for that reason since or the fact, and it is connecting one premise, one idea, one set of words with another. And David is saying that, and this is an extension, please note, of the initial, I will love the Lord. Says because he has inclined his ear to me. Inclined, we've seen this word again, so these are a lot of words that David uses in speaking to his relationship with God. I think God inclines his ear to him. And inclined here means to stretch or spread out or to bend, fold out, extend or offer. So God extends his ear, offer his ear, stretches out and spreads out his ear. And the ear here speaks to the ear as an organ of hearing. So he uses the word ear to reinforce the fact that ears are used to hear. And once again, David uses the language to, to reinforce the way in which God extends himself to us. We know that God is all powerful, we know that God is omnipresent. So to hear what we have to say, God do have to move, for want of a better word. God can stay where he is, I hear what everybody say, anywhere they are. Yet David says that God inclines his ear to him, showing the extent to which God is willing to hear, is willing to listen. It's almost like God is bending down to David and putting his ear against his lip to ensure that everything that David to ensure that everything that David says is heard. That kind of extension is powerful and it, it leaves gratitude within us. It shows that God isn't, isn't negligent of us. I'm sure that all parents struggle with the consistent questions and desire of attention from their children, especially when they're at a young age. Children have a million questions, children want to talk about everything. Children want your attention in almost every little foolishness. But foolishness is the wrong word, but every little thing. But daddy, look at what I draw, mommy, come look at this, this daddy, daddy, mommy, mommy. And it gets tiring, I'm sure, as a parent, I don't know. But I'm sure as a parent, it gets tiring. And especially when you're trying to focus on other things. Sometimes the easiest response is say, not now, not now, I'm doing something, daddy busy, mommy busy, et cetera. God is saying to us that as his children, he is never too busy to incline his ear to us. There is nothing that is so insignificant that we cannot bring it to God. He always has time to listen. He will never say, you tell me this already, I see this already, now is not the time. He is inclining his ear to us. And I'm sure as parents, we know how important that is to children. And as children of God, we recognize the kind of comfort that that provides. Imagine you're struggling with something and it's a God, right now, I am weak. God, I don't know how great deal with it. And God says, you know, right now is not a good time, try me again in the morning. Imagine the kind of depression that that would provide. Imagine you're feeling pain and you need comfort. And God say, not now, not now, I'm busy. Imagine the, how you would feel, the neglect that you would feel, that you are not that important to God. But the God that we have is inclining his ear to us, even after we are repeating something that we have struggled with 20 times already today. God is drawing up a chair. God is putting his work to the side. God is saying, talk to me, let me hear what you need, let me hear what you're going through. The reassurance that comes with that knowledge should encourage us to never tire of seeking God. But sometimes we underestimate how much of a blessing, we don't appreciate how much of a blessing we have, having an all attending God. A God that is always inclining his ear, a God that is always ready to listen to whatever it is that we are struggling with. And David appreciates this. David recognizes how important this is. And David says, because of this, because of this, I love the Lord. And I'm sure when we were growing up, for the, the children that were blessed enough to have parents who paid attention to them, for the most part, I can speak for myself, that fosters love. That fosters appreciation, recognizing that this person cares enough about me to put significance to the things I have to say, to play significance on the things that I have I have, I am going through. And for those who haven't felt that from their own parents in a physical nature, God is here saying, don't worry. I recognize that you didn't have that avenue in a physical sense, but you have that unending avenue in a spiritual sense. And I am not limited like physical fathers and parents are. I am not torn between the busyness of life and catering to the physical needs like the parents of this life, that those parents are. I can give you my undivided attention always. And I am capable of providing. If that is not enough reason to love, I don't know what is. And if that is not enough encouragement to do what David says next, then I don't know what is. And what does David say? Therefore. And therefore, although it looks like a conjunction, is not actually a conjunction. Yes, yes, even with more boring English. But therefore here is an adverb. And the type of adverb that it is, is what we call a conjunctive adverb. And a conjunctive adverb is essentially a conjunction wearing the skin of an adverb. And what conjunctions do, I mean, what conjunctive adverbs do is that they link ideas or paragraphs. The conjunctions link words, conjunctions link groups of words, but conjunctive adverbs link ideas or paragraphs. So when we see David saying, therefore, I will call upon him as long as I live, this therefore is encapsulating all of the ideas that he has said thus far. So everything he said in verse one, because he has heard my voice and my supplication, and everything that he says in verse two, where he says, he has inclined his ear to me. Therefore, because, for the reason that, consequently, as a consequence of all of this, I will call upon him as long as I live. And the call here is the same call that we saw in Psalm 138, where it means to address by name. He is the person. So this, this call upon him here is not just saying, I will call him, but it is almost saying, he is the person I will call. This God, this name is now the person to whom I call out to. This is the person I address in these circumstances. And it is not for a temporary period. This is in permanency. And why wouldn't it be? If this is an individual that is listening out to my voice just for the sake of it. If this is the individual who is answering my prayers and my supplication. If this is the individual that is making the time for me, who is inclining their ear to me at all times, why would I call anybody else? Why would I call anybody else? Why would I not call him? What else could I need in someone to listen that I cannot find wholly and perfectly in God? And I have to agree with David's conclusion. The question is, do we believe that God is doing the things that David believes he is doing? Do we believe that when we call out to God, he's inclining his ear, he's listening to our voice, he is answering our prayers? Because if we believe that, we believe that, then why are we not calling? Why are we not calling him by name? Question, seeing some comments in the chat. I never teach them things in my, in my days. Funny angle. All right, so yes, David draws the con- the conclusion that because of this, as a result of this, for the reason, I will be doing this. And this is just, oh, thank you, brother Smith. Never realized that we were going, so we had covered so much time. That means that we're learning things. All right, so we will continue Psalm chapter 16, we're in two verses. And we are overwhelmed with the, the knowledge that is being provided. We have six more verses to go, one more Psalm to read, and then we'll have concluded this aspect. Password. Go ahead, Sister Smith.
The pill of past providence.
That is correct, and I like, I like how you enunciate all of the syllables. All right, so.
I didn't hear any Z.
Pardon?
I didn't hear any Z. Such a wrong.
It says B.
It just said pill of past providence. Go back to the recording.
Take points from Brother Smith.
I, I, I'm not going to, I will take this into consideration. The password for next class is David the Psamme. So the password for next for class on Tuesday is David the Psamme. All right, thank you for your participation, sorry for going over the time. I will now hand it back over to our announcements.
Thank you, Stephen.